Good evening again, welcome. I call the City Council meeting for Wednesday, January 10th, 2024 to order. This time we'll have a moment of silence for you to think about whatever it is that you'd like to think about. If you please stand and join Alderman Kelly in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Mr. Crump, please call the roll for tonight.
R. Dunn.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Reinards.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
Newton.
Here.
Lynch.
Here.
T. Dunn.
Here.
Jobchin.
Here.
And Burkholder.
Here.
Ten President, Your Honor. Thank you, sir. So again, good evening and welcome, everyone, as we begin the meeting of the City Council. I'd like to welcome everybody in attendance and anybody watching through any particular electronic device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind that as you share your thoughts with your fellow Davenporters, you're also sharing them with anybody throughout the region. We're happy you're participating in your city government, but ask that your participation please reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport a better place, especially for the folks in here. I know there'll be pictures and stuff, but if you put your cellphone on silent or turned off, simply it doesn't get in the way of anybody talking. If you want to address the council, please come to the podium. The microphone's above you. Love to know your name, ward, or address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. You have five minutes. Please address the council and staff as a body and not as any individual. We'll be respectful of you. Thank you very much. And then, we want to hear everyone, so please don't disrupt anyone talking. Please don't cheer, clap, any of that, so we can hear what someone has to say and should have the right to say. Thank you very much. Will, on order, please move approval of the City Council meeting minutes for December 13th, 2023.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Ms. Merritt, any updates for us tonight?
Just a brief update on the city's snow response. At this time, the first pass has been made through all residential areas, and the focus for this evening will shift to responding to the valid requests that have come in. So we'll keep you apprised if that changes. And with that, that's the administrator update for tonight, and we're back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, ma'am. Will, on order, please move approval of the report of the Committee of the Whole for January 3rd, 2024.
Move the report.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. We have six appointments and two proclamations. Do the appointments first. I'll read them all and then ask for a motion to approve. We have three to the Design Review Board. Lina Taffla is a reappointment. Matt Steinerker is a reappointment. Gail Hoff is a reappointment. Library Board of Trustees, Michael Hussey is a new appointment. Vermont of Action Advisory, Troy Farley is a reappointment. Leslie Wilson is a new appointment. I'll ask for a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. We have two proclamations, National Mentoring Month and Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. National Mentoring Month will be first. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. It's my honor to give this proclamation, and it reads, "Whereas January is National Mentoring Month, an annual campaign to raise awareness of and celebrate the powerful impact of mentoring relationships, recruit new mentors, and encourage institutions to integrate quality mentoring into their policies and practices. Whereas the City of Davenport recognizes the contributions of volunteer mentors who link youth to economic and social opportunity while also strengthening our community. Whereas mentoring programs like Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and the Mississippi Valley make our communities and states stronger by enabling impactful relationships that provide invaluable support networks. Whereas mentoring programs generally have a significant positive impact on youth academic achievement, school connectedness and engagement, and educational success, which can lead to outcomes such as improved attendance, grades, test scores, and classroom behaviors. Whereas mentors can help young people set career goals and connect mentees to industry professionals to train for and find jobs. Whereas young people with a mentor are more likely to enroll in college, participate in sports or extracurricular activities, hold a leadership position in a club or sports team, and volunteer regularly. Now therefore, we, Mike Matson, Mayor of the City of Davenport, Iowa, do hereby proclaim January 2024 as National Mentoring Month in Davenport, and encourage all citizens to celebrate and explore mentoring opportunities throughout our community dated this 10th day of January 2024. I move the proclamation."
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This proclamation has been approved, and is there a representative from Big Brothers and Big Sisters to meet me at the lectern? All right. Not seeing one, we will get this to them. Thank you. Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. The next is Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month, read by Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderwoman McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. My honor to present this tonight. Whereas the United States was founded upon the principle that all people are created with the inalienable right to freedom and added the 13th Amendment to the Constitution making slavery illegal, and whereas slavery within the United States today is most often found in the form of forced labor and sex trafficking, which weakens our social fabric, increases violence and organized crime, and debases our humanity, and whereas this heinous crime is found within our community, and whereas the Iowa Network Against Human Trafficking and Slavery has been working since 2005 to abolish all forms of human trafficking through education, prevention, volunteerism, advocacy, and collaboration, and whereas even though awareness of this crime is growing, human trafficking continues to go unreported due to its isolating nature, the misunderstanding of its definition, and the lack of awareness about its indicators, and whereas increased community education on how to identify victims of human trafficking along with increased knowledge of local resources and services for those affected by these criminal actions can help restore freedom and dignity to identified survivors as well as help diminish the number of future victims, and whereas every business, community organization, faith community, family, and individual can make a difference by choosing products that are not made by forced labor, working to protect our young people from sexual exploitation, addressing the problem of internet sex trafficking and pornography, and becoming more aware of the problem and possible solutions. Now therefore, we, Mike Matson, Mayor, and the City Council of Davenport, Iowa, do hereby proclaim January 2024 as Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month in Davenport, and encourage all citizens to become more informed on this growing problem, to be vigilant and report suspicious activity, and to work towards solutions to end trafficking in all its forms in our community dated this 10th day of January 2024. I move the proclamation."
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, and I will tonight be meeting Deanna Valair with Breaking Traffic at the podium to receive.
Thank you for everything you do and your organization does. Sure, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and council members for proclaiming January as Human Trafficking Awareness Month. Longtime former State Senator, Iowa State Senator Maggie Tinsman would have loved to have been here this evening. I'm sure that most of you know that she has done tireless efforts in this arena for at least the past 20 years. She is in Des Moines this evening and will be joining the governor tomorrow for the governor's proclamation, the state proclamation for this. She was the senator that was able to get human trafficking passed as a felony in the state of Iowa. Prior to that, it was not, and she was also very instrumental in getting the mandatory hotel motel awareness training put into legislation, and so now hotels and motels across the state of Iowa must go through that mandatory training if people like you and anyone else in the government wants to stay at a hotel throughout the state of Iowa. We're currently, I gave Deputy City Clerk Brian some information regarding something that the Iowa Network Against Human Trafficking is working on currently, which is trying to get $5 million from the state to fund places like Family Resources. We are very fortunate in the Quad Cities to have Family Resources, and a program of Family Resources is Breaking Traffic, and there is no legislation that offers any kind of money for victims and survivors of human trafficking, and I'm sure that the advocates from Breaking Traffic could very well tell you that it is happening right here in our community, and we definitely need the funds. So we hope that you'll consider reaching out to your state senators and reps, and again, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Next, I have the honor, and the council has the honor, to swear in some new police officers. So Chief, I will meet you at the podium after you give your little talk. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, Jeff Bladel, your police chief. It's my pleasure to introduce four remarkable individuals who recently graduated the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy after 16 weeks of training. We want to welcome not only the new officers, but their families to our community. Some are from, or not from, our community, but today marks that beginning of a journey within our very professional organization. And as you know, our organization prioritizes the highest levels of training, equips our officers with essential tools for effective policing, as well as care and concern for their personal safety in doing the job that we ask them to do. So our commitment to their success extends beyond these halls. It extends to the very heart of our community. We cannot do this job or be successful in what we do without the support from our community. Our agency stands as a beacon of innovation, embracing technology to work smarter and more efficiently, and an organization that values not only tradition and excellence, but also progression and adaptability. So our most important attribute is how we connect with and work alongside our community to face these collective issues that we work together. So again, our very challenging profession, but I have unwavering confidence that these four individuals you're going to meet tonight are up for the task, and with the support of the City Council, city staff, and our community, they're going to excel within the service of our community. So the first one up is Police Officer Stuart Chamberlain. Chamberlain. All right. Stuart Chamberlain was born and raised in London, England. He graduated high school in 2008 before joining the British Army's parachute regiment and completed one deployment in Afghanistan in 2010 and 2011. Stuart served as a police officer in London for two years and two and a half years and before moving to Iowa to be closer to his family in 2019. Stuart became a U.S. citizen in June of 2023. At the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy, Stuart served as a class captain and joined a 300-point club for physical fitness. In his free time, he enjoys church activities, spending time with his family, and going on bicycle rides.
Join us here. All right. Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Stuart Chamberlain.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
For the City of Davenport.
For the City of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Your police officer. And I did forget to mention, his wife Rachel will be pinning his badge.
Ma'am, please.
Oh, go ahead. Danielson. There you go. Congratulations.
Sir.
Police Officer Aaron Gilliland. Aaron was born and raised in Davenport, Iowa, and graduated from West High School. Aaron attended Iowa Central Community College and Austin Peay State University in Clarksville, Tennessee, where he's a member of the cheerleading team. During his time cheerleading, Gilliland competed at Nationals four times, winning one and placing second in the rest. Aaron is excited to start his new journey serving the Davenport community. His father, Jason, will be pinning his badge. I state your name.
I, Andrew Owen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
For the City of Davenport.
For the City of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Your police officer. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Police Officer Xavier McClure. Xavier was born and raised in Davenport, Iowa, and graduated from West High School in 2018. After high school, he enlisted into the Iowa National Guard, completing one deployment, and continues to serve today. In his free time, Xavier enjoys nature, working out, and hanging out with friends. His mother, Amy, will be pinning his badge. I state your name.
I, Xavier McClure.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
For the City of Davenport.
For the City of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Your police officer. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Police Officer Xavier McClure. Xavier was born and raised in Davenport, Iowa, and graduated from West High School in 2018. After high school, he enlisted into the Iowa National Guard, completing one deployment, and continues to serve today. In his free time, Xavier enjoys nature, working out, and hanging out with friends. His mother, Amy, will be pinning his badge. I state your name.
I, Xavier McClure.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Your police officer. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Police Officer Xavier McClure. Xavier was born and raised in Davenport, Iowa, and graduated from West High School in 2018. After high school, he enlisted into the Iowa National Guard, completing one deployment, and continues to serve today. In his free time, Xavier enjoys nature, working out, and hanging out with friends. His mother, Amy, will be pinning his badge. I state your name.
I, Xavier McClure.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
For the City of Davenport.
For the City of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Your police officer. Congratulations. Thank you. Police Officer Andrew Troji. Andrew was born and raised in Donahue, Iowa. He graduated from North Scott High School in 2019. Andrew attended Iowa Central Community College. During his time in high school and college, Andrew was involved in trap shooting. Andrew earned the marksmanship award with a perfect score at the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy. Andrew loves outdoor sports like shooting trap and also loves to hunt and fish. His girlfriend, Melissa, will be pinning his badge. Okay. Yeah, you want? Sure.
Taking advantage of it.
I state your name.
I, Andrew Troji.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
For the City of Davenport.
For the City of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Your police officer. Please, whoever. Yep. Everybody's up there.
You're good. Yeah, we'll stand behind you.
All right. Again, like we want to stress, we can't do this job alone. We appreciate all the support that our City Council, our city administration. As we look at hiring now, we have four that just graduated from the academy. We still have two currently in our field training program, but we just sent seven to the academy starting, you know, starting last week. So we have the opportunity, and we're still recruiting for our April class, but through the hard work of the city and everybody collectively, we're getting there in our numbers, so we're very comfortable. But we appreciate all your support. I couldn't be more proud of all the work that the men and women do at the Davenport Police Department. And again, so very proud to be a Davenport police officer. So thank you, guys, for your time and being here and for your support. And I'll just say, thanks, Chief, and all the work of our city staff. Again, we know it's a challenging time in Scott, especially in the back. Thanks for your work. Four now, seven in the academy, more coming, so our recruiting is picking up, and please pass a word. We love you, police officers in Davenport, Iowa, so please feel free to fill out an application. So, thank you. All right. Next is petitions and communications. I just want to say thanks to Public Works, snowplow drivers, great job getting the main roads done and now in the residuals. Get some rest, because you've got to gear up here shortly again. If you haven't been paying attention to the weather forecast, Thursday and Friday's going to be really interesting, so appreciate the work, but more to come. So I'll pause here before I go to council to let the folks, I apologize for that, speaking while they were leaving, so I'll pause and let them do what they do. Okay, very good. Moving on to council, Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. I wanted to let everybody know that the third award meeting, which is typically the third Monday of the month, will not be. My day is Martin Luther King Day, and the city is off, and I typically don't have my award meeting when there's a holiday because it's difficult for staff and everything else. So, and it's a holiday, so it will be instead the following Monday, January 22nd, at 6:30. Again, just as normal time here at Council Chambers. So I hope you can join me. I will announce who our guests will be or what the topic will be next week, but I wanted to let you know it will not be on Monday, and I didn't think anybody wanted to come out in minus 10 or whatever degrees it's going to be anyway, so we'll all hope for a more typical winter, or this will be the only winter we have the next week or so in this year, and maybe we'll move forward. So January 22nd, 6:30 p.m., third award meeting here at City Council Chambers. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, Your Honor. I wanted to put in a quick plug for an event that's happening at the Freight House this weekend. The Ice Travaganza is happening again Friday through Sunday. Friday begins at 5:00 p.m., goes through 10:00 p.m., Saturday and Sunday, it is 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. This is a completely free, family-friendly event, so this is a great thing that the Downtown Partnership does at the Freight House. It looks like, let me find, I want to say which bank it is, is giving free, the Family Credit Union is providing a warming station and free hot chocolate, so a great time for not only the kids, but the adults as well. And so I always put in the plug, if you're coming downtown for an event like the Ice Travaganza, also make a plan to stop at one of the shops or have dinner downtown as well and support our local businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp, and stay warm. Alderman Reinards.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just want to make a notice, notification that Alderwoman Lynch and I will be having a joint meet and greet for the 7th and 8th Ward tomorrow evening from 6:00 to 7:30 at the Eastern Avenue Library. 7th and 8th Ward, folks, you're all welcome. We certainly like to meet you, and I'm sure Alderwoman Lynch feels the same way. Look forward to seeing folks. Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you, Alderman Reinards. Alderwoman Burkholder.
Thank you. I think this is where I make the comment about the new item that showed up on the agenda overnight about regarding the Humane Society. I just want to say that I'm just really not comfortable removing that from the table just yet.
Ma'am, we'll talk about that when we get to it.
Okay.
Do you have anything else? Alderman, sorry, Alderwoman Newton.
Thank you, Your Honor. Given that this is my first meeting where we have petitions and communications, I just wanted to take the moment to thank the people of Davenport for giving me this honor to serve. I look forward to working with the council, working with staff, and working for the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Newton. Alderwoman Lynch, since you're online, do you have anything?
I do, I'll just move it. Thank you.
Thank you. If, as we move along, I'll try and come to you at the end, but if I forget, just yell in, so, all right?
Thank you very much.
Certainly. Seeing no one else, we'll move to the particular items on discussion agenda. The first one is a resolution awarding a contract for the Modern Woodman Park Field Lighting retrofit project to Musco Lighting in Muscatine, Iowa, in the amount of $365,000. Is there any public with comment? Seeing none, will Alderman please move the resolution?
No move.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion from Alder folks? Alderman Dunn. Rick Dunn.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, I was on the council in 2018 when Major League Baseball mandated that we update the lights, the original lights that we have now, at the cost to the taxpayers of $300,000. And I got a little article here that I pulled up, and I just want to read it real quick. It says, "This is a win-win for everybody. The players will play under the most optimal playing conditions possible in America's most beautiful ballpark. It's good for the Astro players, good for the community, good for our fans, and good for the team, and good for the environment. Plus, with a 25-year warranty, we won't need to even think about lights until the year 2043."
I just want to say that I'm just really not comfortable removing that from the table.
Ma'am, we'll talk about that when we get to it.
Okay.
Do you have anything else? Alderman, sorry, Alderwoman Newton.
Thank you, Your Honor. Given that this is my first meeting where we have petitions and communications, I just wanted to take the moment to thank the people of Davenport for giving me this honor to serve. I look forward to working with the council, working with staff, and working for the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Newton. Alderwoman Lynch, since you're online, do you have anything?
I do have a second moment. Thank you.
Thank you. If, as we move along, I'll try and come to you at the end, but if I forgot, forget, just yell in. All right?
Thank you very much.
Certainly. Seeing no one else, we'll move to the particular items on discussion agenda. The first one is a resolution awarding a contract for the Modern Woodman Park Field Lighting retrofit project to Musco Lighting in Musketine, Iowa, in the amount of $365,000. Is there any public with comment? Seeing none, will Alderman please move the resolution? There's a motion and a second. Any discussion from Alder folks? Alderman Dunn. Rick Dunn.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, I was on the council in 2018 when Major League Baseball mandated that we update the lights, the original lights that we have now, at the cost of the taxpayers of $300,000. And I got a little article here that I pulled up, and I just want to read it real quick. It says, "This is a win-win for everybody. The players will play under the most optimal playing conditions possible in America's most beautiful ballpark. It's good for the Astro players, good for the community, good for our fans, and good for the team, and good for the environment. Plus, with a 25-year warranty, we won't need to even think about lights until the year 2043." And that's a quote by Mr. Dave Heller, who is the owner of the River Bandits. So here we are, you know, less than 20 years away from when we need new lights. We're asking for another $365,000. So I'm just, I hope we get a little better return on our investment on this set of lights. But you know, over the last several years, I've had, I've expressed my concerns to my colleagues and staff regarding the Modern Woodman Agreement. Although I did not vote to accept the current amended agreement with Main Street Baseball because it clearly provides an open taxpayer-funded checkbook to the ball club, but council politics prevailed, and here we are. Although I truly want to vote no on this item, it is clearly stated in the agreement, and I do not wish to put the taxpayers of Davenport in any greater legal liability for breaching this or any other agreement that was voted on by the elected body. And I look forward to future discussions on the agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Rick Dunn. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. If I could ask, and I don't know who in staff, but so I'll just ask staff, and then whoever is appropriate knows who's appropriate. So my understanding of this is that the lights that Alderman Dunn spoke of were when there was a different, there was a minor league baseball structure in place, and this is now a major league baseball structure that happened between the light thing. So the lights that were put in were very good, but they don't meet the major league baseball standards. Is that correct?
I can't speak to the first part of that as far as what the standards were. You're correct that there was a separate minor league baseball organization. Major League Baseball in the late teens decided that they wanted to be all of baseball, so all of professional baseball. So they've whittled all of the minor league franchises down to 124 farms for each major league team, and they've incorporated their standards for facilities. So the lights that are currently in place do not quite meet the major league standard for lights.
Correct. But did meet, yeah, okay. And I also, I also wanted to, there is now something that Major League, and this might be, Mr. Merritt might be able to better answer this. There is a, now a requirement by Major League Baseball that's different, where there's an audit or something like that. Is that correct?
Correct. So Clay Merritt, Engineering and Capital Projects. So part of when Major League Baseball took over ownership of all the, I'm using quotations, minor league baseball teams, is part of that is they perform a facility audit. So they have a number of standards that they ensure that have to be met in order to have that affiliate. This last summer is when they performed the audit on Modern Woodman Park, and we found our number of findings that we had to improve at our stadium in order to remain compliant the lighting is such project.
Okay.
As one of such projects.
And if you could just wait a minute. Do we have a, do we have a February meeting scheduled? I'm remembering a February meeting scheduled to talk about just this whole big, broad topic.
I believe the mayor indicated early March, so.
We don't have one scheduled yet, but we are looking for March. That's yet to come.
Okay, but this, the reason why we can't postpone this till then is because?
So part of that agreement has, part of our lease agreement ensures that we will meet Major League Baseball facility standards. Major League Baseball has stated that before the start of the 2024 season, so this upcoming April, we have to have a number of standards met. It's a threshold, a point threshold. In order to get underneath that threshold and meet those compliance standards, the lighting project is something that needs to move forward. That way, we are in full agreement or in compliance with our lease.
And again, voting no on this violates, essentially violates our contract. Is that correct?
If we were not to perform the project, we would be unable to get under that point threshold, and we would not be able to meet that portion of our lease agreement.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, Your Honor. So first off, I did want to thank Alderman Dunn for bringing this up and starting the discussion on the lights. And I know one of the questions we had was, you know, who tested the lights, who was there, and what did they show? And we did, we were provided the actual test document for the lights, and I personally was satisfied with what was supplied to the council related to the lights. Now, hearing what we just heard, which is if we don't get under the points for the 2024 season, we'd be in breach of our contract and potentially jeopardize baseball in Davenport for 2024, I don't want to do that. I intend to vote for this. But I am concerned by this seemingly moving goalpost of what the city of Davenport has to provide for minor league baseball to operate. And so one thing I think is really important when we have that work session is for us to fully understand what that audit process is going to look like in the future, how often they're going to come back to us, and when they come back to us, or what's going to change, and is there going to be financial commitments? So I'd really like a better understanding of that going into that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Gripp. Alderman Kelly.
I want to add one piece, and when it comes to that audit, make sure that one of us is at the table, because I was under the impression that that audit happened without us as a city. So. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Anyone else? Very good, not seeing anyone. Okay. Mr. Crapp, please call the roll to approve the resolution.
Lynch.
Yes.
Burkholder.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Jobchin.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Gripp.
Yes.
T. Dunn.
Yes.
R. Dunn.
Yes.
And Reiners.
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor.
Very good, the resolution is approved. The next area is a motion approving beer and liquor license applications. There are a bunch here. I'm going to read them all, then I'll go through the next process. Okay? And I'll say LPT, and that begins with all of them, so just know that. First one's 5523, 3624 West Locust Street, new license, new owner, Class B. 5524, 2805 Telegraph Road, new license, owner, Class Type B. 5525, 3129 Rockingham Road, new license, new owner, Type B. 5522, 1732 Marquette, North Marquette, new license, owner, Type B. 5519, 1136 West Locust Street, new license, owner, Type B. 5520, 2242 East 12th Street, new license, owner, Type B. 5521, 303 West Locust Street, new license, owner, Type B. 5517, 201 West 53rd Street, new license, owner, Type B. 5518, 1670 West Locust Road, new license, owner, Type B. Is there any public with comment? Seeing none, will an arm please move the motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any discussion from Alder folks? Seeing none, Brian, please call the roll.
Kelly.
Yes.
T. Dunn.
Yes.
Gripp.
Yes.
Jobchin.
Yes.
Burkholder.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Reiners.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
And R. Dunn.
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor.
Very good. The discussion agenda is passed. The next is consent agenda. I understand Alderman T. Dunn would like to take one thing off for a question and then put it back on. Alderman Dunn.
I'd like to take item 12 off the consent agenda for a discussion. And I mean, at this, at this time, I'd like to bring staff up and give us a overview of the project, how it would be funded, and to ask any questions that came up last week, if possible. Thank you.
Clay Merritt, Engineering and Capital Projects. So the project for Destination Iowa is kind of threefold. First and foremost, it is the design and construction of Main Street Landing. That is a park project located in the lot directly underneath the Sky Bridge, and then a substantial portion of the riverfront on the south side of the rail, basically from the river landing all the way to the roller dams. One of the things we were able to do from a funding perspective is originally, the previous city council had approved about $6 million of ARPA funding for the next phase of Main Street Landing. In addition to that, we took six mil, or we utilized $6 million from the Canadian Pacific Community Investment Fund, which was purposely set aside for mitigation efforts for the now-approved CP Rail merger. And we were able to combine that $6 million in coordination with the Figgy Art Museum, who privately raised $2.4 million. Combine those for a $9.6 million grant from the state to create this Destination Iowa project. I know a couple of questions that have come up recently. One is quiet zones. Quiet zones is built into this. So with the increased traffic for rail, how can we install the necessary infrastructure so when the rail lines come through, they are not required all of the time to blow their horns? So part of that piece is approximately $3.5 million for that infrastructure upgrade. That infrastructure consists of two separate components. First is improvements that happen within the city right-of-way. This is what, we already have a design consultant onboard, we're about 30% done with design. We just passed last week those design plans off to the Federal Rail Administration for their review. It's part of the process. We expect probably in the next coming weeks to get their comments back, and once we receive those, we'll continue to march forward with our portion of the project. The second component of quiet zones is infrastructure improvements that need to be made within the Kansas, excuse me, the Canadian Pacific, Kansas City Southern infrastructure. So it's their electrical and everything within their right-of-way. We've been in coordination with them, with their engineering team, and I hope in the next probably month or two to bring in front of you a funding agreement. That funding agreement will ensure that work performed within their property is reimbursed to them, but it also ensures that they will adhere to federal standards so that we can use this money to essentially pay for that work. So this is, and when I say this money, I mean this particular grant and the money we've set aside from CP. Another item for Main Street Landing was how are we going to maintain a very, very large park? I mean, the Main Street Landing component of this is roughly $16 million. I know the previous council, that was one of their largest concerns. I would say as we go through several design durations, one of our biggest things is sustainability and ensuring that we can continue to maintain this, not just over the next few years, but over the next few decades. Our Parks and Recreation Director, Chad Dyson, has been in every single meeting, is a core member of our team, and that's one of his thoughts, not only to ensure that the design is incorporated into what he believes is the vision for our parks team or our parks infrastructure, but that we can maintain that over time. A couple of questions have come up. Can we use ARPA funding to help with those maintenance costs? The answer to that question is no. ARPA funding has a set timeline on it. So in essence, by the end of this calendar year, those ARPA funds have to be obligated, and then two years prior, they have to be spent. At that point, the ARPA program goes away. So staff, as part of this initial conversation, we ensured that we will put the necessary funding in place within the Parks and Recreation operating budget to make sure that we can maintain that. The last particular item was about a pedestrian bridge and how we can safely cross the tracks should a train be in the way. That is actually built into that Main Street Landing project. The terminus of the pedestrian bridge is between, is the park, current parking lot between the Sky Bridge, and essentially goes up and over, up to the center, about 25 feet over rail, which is a requirement, and then lands on the south side of the tracks. This is purposely being designed both for aesthetics, but mainly to ensure that we can get police and fire, their utility vehicles, over the rail should we be needed to. So we're just making sure that we're being sustainable and we're using best practices for this particular park, but we're also having public safety in mind. If you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer.
Alderman Dunn? Good? Okay, we'll put it back on consent?
Yeah, item 12 goes back on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Okay, back on consent. All right, I'll accept a motion and a second to approve all items on consent. Motion is second. Brian, please call the roll for all items on consent.
Gripp.
Yes.
Reiners.
Yes.
T. Dunn.
Yes.
Burkholder.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Jobchin.
Yes.
R. Dunn.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
And Newton.
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor.
Very good, consent's approved. The next area is, are there any other ordinances, resolutions, motions? We have one, but first we need to suspend the rules. There's a motion for suspension of rules to add and vote on that particular item. There's a motion and a second. Brian, please call the roll for suspension. Understanding we need eight.
Burkholder.
No.
T. Dunn.
No.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Gripp.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
R. Dunn.
No.
Reiners.
No.
Lynch.
Yes.
Newton.
No.
And Jobchin.
Yes.
The.
Looks like five and five.
Right, there is not eight for suspension rules, so we do not even talk about this. Next item is there a public with business? Please know the rules. You have five minutes. Please talk to the council and the staff as a whole. And we would love to hear new stuff. I will, I am going to, just so everybody knows, if it's been a continuation of stuff over and over, I'm going to ask you to move to the next item. Please state your name, address. If you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from.
Gary Eklund, I live in Davenport, Iowa, and I want to begin by saying that I think the rules that you just mentioned violate my right to free speech. I don't think there's any law that says that you can't be concerned about, let's just pick a topic. Fair hiring. Fair hiring in the city is the topic. I'm going to share some stuff. I know there's five new people on the city council, and out of respect for the new people, and I mentioned last week, I don't take it for granted. I don't care whether you're Republicans, Democrats, conservatives, liberals, environmentalists, anti-environmentalists. You're all individuals. If you all voted as a block, you're the, you're a five-person half, half. And if you voted the same on any issue, one person from any other block, and you've got a majority. And I try to treat everybody with respect and dignity, and that may not come across because I am very mad at some people who I believe should be in prison. But I'm going to try to go back in time. And I left out my trail of tears, which I want to mention every single time that I speak. There is a significance to that that I'm not going to try to explain right this minute, but I believe that Davenport, Iowa has not finished with its trail of tears, repression, and harassment, and expulsion, and removal. Including people in this room who should be in prison, but again, there, I'm repeating myself. I had resolved, and this is a piece of artwork that I'm not supposed to talk about, I guess, but it is a piece of artwork, and it's a tale. I, 20 years ago, 25 years ago, somewhere in there, I asked the city of Davenport for its statistics on minority hiring rates.
I'll keep your time. If we'd refrain from conversations, please. If you'd want to talk, please step outside the doors. Thank you very much. Carry on.
About 20, 25 years ago, I asked the city of Davenport, the city of Moline, the city of Rock Island, St. Ambrose College, and Augustana College for their minority hiring rates, the statistics that I know they have on file. Davenport made it clear that they would only release those under Freedom of Information Act. They knew they were extremely embarrassing. They knew their hiring, minority hiring rates were ridiculously awful 20, 25 years ago. And no offense to any of the individual department heads, because if you get hired for a job, you're hired for the job, but when you have 14 department heads in a city which has approximately 50% minorities, a mix of black, non-white Hispanic, Asian, mixed race, and a couple of Native Americans who snuck in when the police department was looking the other way, and the legal department was looking the other way, and the neighborhood department was looking the other way. But I'm.
Gary, you know our rules. Quit making accusations, okay? You know that. Carry on.
I'm trying to be fair, but I'm also trying to be accurate. If you have an explanation, and we're not supposed to do back and forth, but if you haven't, anybody has an explanation next week, not demanding an answer this week, if anybody has an explanation why out of 14 department heads, only one is black, and as far as I know, everybody else looks like they could meet the one-drop rule, and I'm going to refer to, I'm going to be making some comments, some explanations. I've used the one-drop rule. I use white supremacist. I could talk about college supremacist. I could talk about wealth supremacist. I'm pleased to see that among the new people, they may be college education supremacists, they may be wealth supremacists, but not everybody could be a white supremacist because they wouldn't qualify. And that doesn't mean they'll vote how I want them to vote, but I'm pleased to see it. I left out what I was going to talk about, but I joked to the police officers, the new ones, that remember the Union won the Civil War? And that's not an entire joke. I'm going to be criticizing the police department. And again, to the new people, it's hard to understand why I'm here. If I had time, I'd go chronologically from Easter 2021, which is a very important date to remember, Easter 2021, and the city's response to a particular landlord who said he didn't like having to rent to low-life black people. I will be complaining about the police. I will be specific and individual. black people. I will be complaining about the police. I will be specific and individual. I introduced myself, the first time I came down here this, this year, to Chief Ladel. He's been nothing but polite and courteous and respectful, and I want to make that clear. So when I'm criticizing the police department, specific individuals, it's not him. The new people, I congratulate them for, on being hired. I hope that they focus on violence and that they don't learn the bad habits, because there's a habit among people. Derek Chauvin in Minneapolis showed it. He wasn't acting as an individual. The city had taught him, like Davenport has taught its people, the mayors and the city councils, and not just this mayor, not just this city council, that, that there are people who deserve to be treated with respect and dignity, and then there are other people who don't.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
I think this is the shortest meeting of all time. LaShawna Dixon, 7th Ward. I, I think it's really weird that, and quite interesting, as we would say, is that we can't come up here and talk about what we want to talk about. We pay tax dollars here. So, my five minutes is my five minutes. As long as I'm not cussing nobody out, then there's nothing you can do. So if I want to come up here and talk about 324 Main Street every week, that's my business. Because obviously, this building had ignored 324 Main Street, amongst other bills, big, uh, buildings in this area. So you can't tell me what I can and cannot talk about. That's not very fair. You get to set all the rules, and we don't? Sir, we pay you. Sorry, I know I have to address you as a whole. Got a little fire in there. Another cute, another thing I want to address is this picture right here. I would think that y'all would all see this picture. Y'all seen this picture before. This is Mr. Warner, sorry, and Cory Spiegel.
Don't call it names, ma'am, please.
Oh, well, I can say Cory Spiegel. She's not here no more, no?
Please don't.
Oh, okay. But anyway, I will post this to my page, and everybody can go and look at it. This is a Christmas party. Christmas party. And from what I understand, is he's the one who helped her with that $1.6 million. And they're at a Christmas party. Oh, that's a little suspicious to me. Just quite a bit. And I don't want to keep on having to go back and forth with this. But it, we forgot to talk about it last week. This isn't good. This does not look good. Amongst other things that have not happened right in this city, we have somebody who had won their court case and did not be able to return to dais because of personal opinion egos. Take the Supreme Court, but he won his case. We have another one who has a racial name co-, well, name used, and we haven't heard nothing about that. These are the issues that have been brought forward that we have not heard nothing about. There's supposed to have been a group of people put together. What? This happened in September? It's January. We haven't heard nothing about that. Just because of the person who used the word, is not hearing no word. Do we just throw it away and scoot it aside? No. It was brought into the public, so handle it publicly. I think it's fair. That's all I have for you guys today. And I will be posting this picture. This is a lovely picture, friends.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Cheryl Shagna, 3rd Ward, 1401 Clay Street. I am new to the process, but I want to understand what just happened before this public business. Do I understand that last week, the motion to direct the city administrator and related staff to implement an internal services unit, negotiated any contracts or agreements, was put off for two cycles? Motion second and agreed. And if I understand right, you guys just blew right through that? Motion second and agreed, to go ahead and do it, even though all the animal people, okay, I would love to understand better what just happened. Please.
We don't dialogue here, ma'am. I'm happy to meet with you after.
Thank you. I moved to Davenport in 2019. Extremely excited to come into this city. A new journey beginning. Full of enthusiasm, optimism, excitement. I'd come here, and I'd come here for work before. I liked what I saw and made the decision to move here. And like they say, there are some places that are great places to visit, but not great places to live. And that's what I've learned about the city of Davenport, unfortunately, over time. There seems to be a prevailing attitude of apathy. If you ask people why they don't come to the meetings, they'll say they don't care. If I ask why they don't talk to their alderperson, they'll say, I tried. They don't care. Why do we not get voter turnout? Because people really believe they can't make a difference, and nothing will change. So they give up, they quit trying, and then they don't care either. Davenport has quite a history, not all of it good. Each and every one of you has an opportunity in 2024 to improve the city of Davenport, to change the "we don't care" motto. I decided to research apathy today. They said the treatment for apathy, psychotherapy. We can all do better. And my expectation is, is that each of you is going to do better. When you know better, you do better. I live in the 3rd Ward. I got involved with the problems with the park because somebody drove through the stone wall at Terrace View Park. What ended up happening is that park being closed off for three years because of one person not willing to listen, to adjust, to pivot, stuck in old ways, old ideas. It's always been this way. That should be a red flag for everybody. It's always been this way. Helen Keller says, "Science may have found a cure for most evils, but it has found no remedy for the worst of them all, the apathy of human beings." George Bernard Shaw, "The worst in, towards our fellow creatures is not to hate them, but to be indifferent to them." That is the essence, essence of inhumanity. Eight homes around Terrace View Park. Eight residents or more got involved in those discussions. By the time it was over, four of the residents had moved. Most of the residents dropped out of the discussions. And those residents took the heat for the park being closed when the residents wanted it open. It's finally open now. Three years. Over three years that that park was closed. Discouragement from city hall and city employees. The culture of apathy. Sexual harassment, misogyny. I'd like to know what plans you have in place. When I was in corporate America, they sent me to training. I took How to Win Friends and Influence People, believe it or not. I also took sexual harassment training. I want to know what training is in place for city employees to where the belief that this will work. Let's just do this. Where I come from, you measure once. You measure twice if you've done once.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. My name is Kathy Hunley. I do reside in Davenport. I've been here almost 17 years. I love my city. What I do not understand is, when your neighbors know your dad's sick, your neighbors know your dad is going to end up dying. They would call on the city on me and other people to turn them in for something that they're trying to do to improve their yard, to make their yard better, to enhance the neighborhood. But instead of going to an alderman and giving the alderman a chance to do mediation between two parties, no. I've got a letter, photographs, and a threat. Did the city person think about my dad? Does she even give a crap about my dad? No. She didn't even care my dad was dying. She didn't even care that I spent the whole month of October, November, and December at my dad's bedside. All she cared about was this debris getting picked up. The debris was building materials. If my dad hadn't got sick, the building would have been built. I'm not going to drop my dad over a building. But I just don't think it's fair that I have to throw my building material that I paid hard-earned money for in the trash can because one person called and that one person knew that my dad was sick. She waited till the day I left out of town, which is very vindictive, to call in on me. She could have went to the alderman, because I'm in 3rd Ward. The alderman and me and her could have sat down, and we could have had a mediation. We could have came to an agenda. We could have came to an agreement. What was going to happen? How long was it going to take me to finish this building? Blah, 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 blah. But instead, no. One person has a right to control my actions? One person has a right to phone into the city and control what I want to do in my yard? I'm paying taxes. Why can't I have what I want to do in my yard? It's not offending you. It's not offending the city. It's not offending anybody. I have worked diligently to, to try to get my nonprofit off the ground, God's festivals. I'm not a business person. I'm an ex-truck driver. But I honestly believe that if we as a community can work together, and we work individually together to help our neighborhoods, I know everybody on my street. They know my business. I know their business. I sit there and watched a young lady with children. Three or four weeks, she couldn't get her car started. Nobody was buying her a battery. Her parents wouldn't buy her a battery because her parents don't have the money. Nobody was coming to her aid to help her get to and from work to support her children. I went and bought her a battery. Because if I don't help someone out to get ahead, they're never going to get ahead. Our city needs to come together, and the neighbors need to learn to work together as a community. Okay, I can understand. I have a neighbor. He really doesn't reside there. He just lives off his mom. He lives in a little shed behind the house. He literally just takes cars apart, junk apart, whatever he gets from the street. He brings it back, and he takes it apart, and he makes that a nice store. Been there 17 years. I have never called on anybody. Never. Because I'm an adult. I'm 61. I literally believe that the people in that community need to have a right. We should be able to go to our alderman and say, hey, alderman, you need to go talk to this family and find out why is their yard being a junked-up yard. Or better yet, why are you doing with what you're doing with anything in regard, instead of going to the city? I have no rights. I was demanded and ordered, I have to get this removed off my property, or you guys are going to come in and clean up my property, and then I'm going to get billed two or three $5,000, which I don't have. Which makes me make the decision, well, you know what? I'd rather live back in that little dinky town that I grew up in, way back in Kentucky where my dad died. Because there, the people work together as a family unit. They know if you're down, they'll bring you a gallon of milk. They know if your car won't start, they'll give you a ride to work. Davenport has gone far, far bad. Davenport, these people don't give a crap about you. You could sit on the side of the road with your car busted down. You think someone's going to stop and give you gas? No. You think someone's going to help you out? No. My problem, my progress, I want to change that with my nonprofit. I want everybody to work together hand in hand to make sure that one person climbing that mountain gets a hand up from everybody. So I'm on top of the mountain. I want to handle, have someone else climb that mountain.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next. Anyone else, please?
Happy New Year. Derek Cornutt, 7th Ward. Got a couple of things I want to bring up to the new alder people that I would think that they need to know about. I have not heard any discussion, gosh, since we voted the one-ways to two-ways about the east end of the street, 3rd and 4th Street up by River Drive. Have they got approval from Iowa DOT to even convert those into two-way streets? I don't know. But here we are, moving right ahead. Let's, you know, damn the torpedoes, full speed ahead, you know? I think that you all need to figure out if I was going to let you even do that. So, that's just one thing. The other thing was, we gave a company $750,000 to come up with three designs for Main Street Landing. Where are those designs? It's been a year and a half. You know? We want to see the work. The money that we gave them, where's that at? You know? You guys get to decide what that park looks like. Have they told you that? Anybody brought that up? No. But you guys need to look into that and see where that $750,000 was spent, and where those three designs are. The other thing, Animal Services here, love them. They do a great job saving lives on animals and stuff like that. But since they went to a no-kill shelter, they don't enforce the laws of Davenport. It, some of the laws offend their friendly nature to animals. If a dog kills another dog, they don't want it put down. They want to find a home for it. A dog that's done that is going to do it again. Not only did it bite two times before, and Animal Service took no action at all, they let this dog go for the third time when it killed another dog. If we're going to deal with the Humane Society over there, we need to make sure they're going to enforce the laws that are on the books for Davenport and not their conscience. You know? Keep saving as many animals as you can, great. But when an animal needs to be put down, it needs to be put down. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just like to thank you for the appointment of Michael Hustedey to the Library Board of Trustees.
Mr. Emming, for the record, just tell us.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Steve Emming. I live in the 1st Ward, and I'm president of the Davenport Public Library Board of Trustees. Just wanted to thank you for the appointment of Michael Hustedey. He'll be a great trustee, and also for the confirmation of his appointment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing anything else, Ms. Merritt? Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Have a good evening. Watch the weather.